Please rise for the pledge, living citizen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming this evening. Item E, we are going to have a public hearing to be held regarding sufficiency of textbooks and instructional materials for the 2012-2013 school year for education code 60119. Opening the public hearing. Does anybody wish to speak on our sufficiency of textbooks? Seeing that I'm closing public hearing, okay. Item F, adoption and approval of the agenda.
Cool.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item G, special recognitions and presentations. Our first presentation, our student representatives from our junior highs and our high schools, will make presentations of the Student of the Month awards to two students from each of the secondary schools in the Petaluma Joint Union High School District for the month of September. This is one of our favorite parts of our board meetings, as you can imagine. And how this works is, I invite the student reps to come up. They'll introduce the student, the student will come up, get their plaque. Wait, I don't see any awards.
Yeah.
Get their, get their plaque, and then the representative will tell us about the student and their accomplishments. And then at the end of that individual student's presentation, they'll go back to their seat, and if their family members are here, we have them rise and be acknowledged for the support that they give those exceptional students. So that's how it works. And I will just talk slowly. So let's see. I think what we could do is go ahead and, we'll start the introductions, and then we'll get caught up on the actual handing of the plaques. Because we, there's quite a bit of chatter about the students and how amazing they are. So, let's start with the representatives from Cowanworth Junior High. Who do we have here representing? Come on forward. And we'll do them one student at a time, so.
Hi, I'm Yavvi Walsh, and Cowanworth Junior High School is pleased to introduce September's Student of the Month, Kaishi Ito.
Kaishi? Wait, wait. Kaishi. And the other thing we do is we have you turn and face the camera while we hear all about you.
I know.
Okay.
Kaishi is a gifted eighth grade student who's currently, who currently has earned a 4.0 grade point average here at Cowanworth Junior High School. Kaishi's favorite class is physical science because he likes to, he likes the different experience and labs he gets to participate in and figure out. When Kaishi finishes high school, he wants to attend a college or university to study a topic to be named later. According to his teachers, Kaishi is an excellent student who is well-respected by his classmates for his work ethic, his intelligence, and for being earnest. He is one of the best participants in class. When, when Kaishi is not focusing on his schoolwork, he likes to draw, art, create things out of different materials he can find, make models, cars, play video games, and go fishing with his father. Kaishi says his friends would describe him as funny, nice, active, and intelligent. His parents are extremely proud of all of his accomplishments and very pleased that his recognition here can add. Kaishi's effort and motivation will keep him successful in whatever he chooses to pursue in life. Congratulations, Kaishi.
Kaishi? Okay, is this your family over here with the cameras? Who would rise and be acknowledged for your support of your student? Congratulations. So we have these nice little plaques that hopefully they're, they're, our regular secretary is not here this evening, so we're not sure where she put them. So, we will make sure you get them. If we can't find them tonight, we will get them to you, so thank you very much. And their names will be on the permanent ones on the wall up here. Oh, there are another one.
Okay, Cowanworth Junior High School is pleased to introduce the September's Student of the Month, Sawyer Backman. Sawyer is a gifted, gifted student who has maintained a 3.8 three-point average, point, sorry, a 3.8 three-grade point average during her two years at Cowanworth Junior High School. Sawyer has been a member of Cowanworth band playing trombone and tumba, tumba, tuba. When Sawyer is not working on school, she enjoys swimming, running, biking, and hanging out with her friends. Sawyer's favorite class, classes are science and physical education. Sawyer enjoys science because she likes to, likes the different labs and experience she gets to work on. Sawyer also enjoys physical education class because she likes playing all the different sports and being physically active. After high school, Sawyer wants to attend University of California, Santa Cruz, to earn a master's in science. Sawyer also wants to spend a year in France to study with a school exchange program. Sawyer's teachers describe her as a hard-working student who goes above and beyond with all of her assignments. She gets along with everyone and has a great sense of self-esteem that is infectious. Sawyer's teachers go on to say Sawyer is self-motivated, well-liked, admired and respected by her classmates as well as her teachers. Sawyer's friends describe her as intelligent, flexible, caring, and understanding. Sawyer's parents are proud of her nomination and equally proud of her daughter, their daughter and her accomplishments both at Cowanworth and outside of school. Sawyer's ability and work ethic will continue to make her successful in like, school and life. Congratulations, Sawyer.
Sawyer's family, please rise and be acknowledged. And again, your plaque, our representative from Petaluma Junior High School.
Hi, I'm Whitney, and I'm here to represent Amy Farrett from Petaluma Junior High School. A bright and highly respected-
Where's it? What was the name?
Amy Farrett.
Amy?
A bright and highly respected student, Amy Farrett is the September Student of the Month for Petaluma Junior High School. Teachers say Amy is extremely motivated, taking on challenges and pushing past obstacles that might hold others back. She's persevering, determined, disciplined, and constantly dedicated to producing excellent sport. A 4.0 student, Amy is on the honor roll and has earned the principal's Renaissance and Gold Awards for academic achievement. Her teachers say the following: Amy's work ethic stands out as above and beyond what others produce. She is very friendly and respectful and is always willing to help others. Amy is very thoughtful and conscientious and contributes enormously to the classroom environment. Amy's the editor of the yearbook, gets along well with others, and is a positive role model for her peers. A well-rounded student, Amy keeps herself busy with extracurricular activities. She plays soccer on her community traveling team and is a star on the basketball and track team at PJHS. In her quiet time, she loves to read and spoils her cat and dog by giving them lots of love and attention. Amy's future goals include doing the best she can in school and sports and attending a four-year college. She has all the skills and qualities it takes to successfully fulfill her dreams. Amy's parents state, "We are very proud of her accomplishments. She works extremely hard, and we are always impressed that no matter how busy she is with her sports, she always manages to get her homework done."
Congratulations, Amy. That's me sound like you would rise and be acknowledged.
Petaluma Junior High School has selected Kyle Abelliamen, Abelliamen as the September Student of the Month. A very special and unique individual. Kyle Abelliamen has been chosen as the September Student of the Month at Petaluma Junior High School. He is hardworking and intelligent, as evidenced by his 4.0 GPA, placement in advanced English, and earning the principal's Gold and Renaissance Award for Academic Excellence. In addition, Kyle's teachers see him as well-spoken and a calm influence. He is polite, respectful, kind and friendly. Kyle's yearbook teachers state that he did an awesome job selling yearbooks during orientation, being friendly, collecting payments, and keeping detailed organized records. Teachers enjoy having Kyle in, in their class, appreciate his curiosity and intelligence. Kyle has many interests and hobbies of which completed emphasis with great. He enjoys skiing, surfing, and skimboarding, and studies photography, drumming, and politics. Family is very important to Kyle, and he cheers going to Massachusetts every year to connect with cousins, aunts, and uncles. He loves to travel and was revited by an eight-day river rafting trip down the Colorado River through the Grand Canyon, and inspiring trip to the Big Island of Hawaii. Kyle's future plans include going to college, study quantum physics, and old photography. He currently spends a lot of time pioneering the universe as he continues his quest to take the perfect pictures. Kyle's father says, "Kyle is a very active mind. He frequently amazes me with his memory and his interest in things most thirteen-year-olds don't care about." He is really fantasized, sorry, fantasized by quantum mechanics and tries to understand the very forging concepts. Life is never boring when Kyle's around. Congratulations, Kyle Abelliamen.
Kyle's family, please rise and be acknowledged. Okay, and then our representatives from Casa Grande High School. Okay, well, if, if they don't come before, do you have one here?
Yes.
Okay, before the, that one, or before they were done with the reports, then we'll save it for a future meeting, so we'll kind of, you know, hold until the very, very end, okay?
Hi, I'm Erin Mickelson, and I am here to introduce our September Student of the Month, Amy Jin. Amy Jin has a cumulative GPA of 4.39 and is a high school senior at Casa Grande High School. In addition, she has immersed herself into the Santa Rosa Junior College community, as well with thirty-two completed units of classes such as English 1A, HTML, and abnormal psychology. She is the chair of the Petaluma Youth Commission, where she advocates for youth, facilitates bimonthly meetings, and improves community assets available to youth. Amy is also a UC Berkeley Young Workers Ambassador, where her responsibilities include speaking out about youth's rights in the workplace at large conventions like Workers Memorial Day in Oakland. She herself worked as a file clerk during her freshman year of high school. At her school, Amy is the president of HOSA, Health Occupation Students of America, which is a national student organization endorsed by the U.S. Department of Education. Furthermore, with her debate experience at junior college, she is establishing a debate team at Casa Grande High, so more students have the opportunity to practice public speaking and improve their speaking skills. She plans to attend a four-year college, major in biochemistry, and then attend law school to eventually become a medical lawyer. Congratulations, Amy.
Amy's family, did she, oh, they're able to come? Okay. Thank you very much. And then our representative from Petaluma High.
Hi, everyone. My name is Casey Page. I'm a senior at Petaluma High School, and I am also one of two school board representatives, so I'd like to start off by introducing our first Student of the Month, Sophie Payne. Sophie is a very hard-working, dedicated, and talented student. Out of two-hundred-ninety in our class, she is ranked number one. She participates in a schedule filled with six AP classes, so a very, very rigorous course. And she's constantly challenging herself, and she never ceases to strive to reach her biggest, her highest potential. In addition to taking on this very challenging class schedule, Sophie has a full-time job at a local bakery. As a volunteer, she does community service at Cots and Sarah's Community Project. Her athletic prowess is demonstrated on the soccer field, where she's the captain of the varsity soccer team at Petaluma High School. Her club activities include president of Global Citizens Corps, which is an environmentalist club honor school. And she's also head of the community service for the California Scholarship Federation, which is our honors club. And she also participates in five other different clubs on campus. Sophie elegantly and effectively juggles sports, school, volunteer hours, and work while maintaining an overall 4.55 academic GPA. Sophie is fluent in Spanish, and she's very friendly towards everyone. She's well-rounded, generous, and a driven person, and she's very thankful for this award. Congratulations. All right, so our next Student of the Month is Brandon Garner. Congratulations. So Brandon is the fourth generation, his family, to attend Petaluma High School. He's challenged himself with extracurricular activities throughout his time in Petaluma High School. His freshman and sophomore year, he was vice president of his class until he took over as president, and now I'm luckily, lucky to be serving him as ASB vice president, as he is the vice president of our ASB class. He's very determined, and I've seen him spend up to thirteen hours after school every day working hard for our leadership course. His sophomore and junior year, he was a member of FFA, and even before joining FFA, he raised and showed rabbits and chickens independently since his freshman year. Brandon participated in track his freshman year and sophomore year, and he also ran cross-country his sophomore and junior year. This includes very vigorous training throughout the winter and summer months. Also, Brandon, since February 2012, has worked at a local frozen yogurt shop. While doing these extracurriculars, he's been able to maintain a 3.8 academic GPA. He's also had numerous hours of community service, everything ranging from schoolwork to working with animals. And we're very proud to have Brandon as our Student of the Month for September.
Brandon, to have family here, what's good to you? Okay. Well, now you know why this is always our favorite part of our meetings, because we get to hear about these absolutely amazing kids, and, actually not kids, some of them, young, young people, and all of their accomplishments. It's so inspiring for us to hear about all that they do. And we know it takes a lot of work and support from their families as well, so thank you all for your continued support of your kids. We will get those awards to you as soon as we find them. I apologize for that. Also, you are all welcome to continue on, because our next item is about the budget. However, some of you may have some homework or other activities you need to, to attend, so we will take a very short recess in case you need to leave. But you're all welcome to stay. Our next item is a report. Mitch Hoffman, chief business official or presenter, report on the 2011-2012 unaudited actuals with the 2012-2013 revised budget for all funds.
All right, so, um, thank you all. So at last, what you've been waiting for. I know. All right. So, um, the unaudited trends, we'll start with, we'll try to keep this short and smooth. But, these trends are, are showing as if the initiative passes in November, or one of them passes in November, and what the ending fund balance will look like. So, in the current year, our net unappropriated reserves are just over eight-point-three million dollars. And if you look out into the subsequent years, we're deficit spending a little bit in the current year by one-point-two million. We assume that we're going to see a cost of living adjustment in thirteen-fourteen, and our deficit spending goes down to six-hundred-and-thirty-two. That also includes a little bit of increase in enrollment. And then in fourteen-fifteen, we're also assuming that we'll see a cost of living adjustment, and again, pretty stable enrollment, and we'll, we're anticipating that we'll see a net positive for the first time in, well, a long time. Yeah, yeah, pretty much. Of three-hundred-two thousand dollars. So, these estimates don't include anything, no, no salary increases beyond step and column. We don't have anything built in for health benefit increases. Everything is remaining fairly stable. So, if the initiative passes, we anticipate seeing a six-point-eight million dollar ending fund balance. But, this also doesn't add back any school days, so right now, we are five school days less than what we should be, at least, at a minimum. One-hundred-and-eighty days in the, we're at one-seventy-five. So, that doesn't include adding things like that back, or adding back programs or anything. So, I just wanted to make sure everybody knows. So, if the initiative fails, and this is a little bit harder to see in this light, our deficit spending increases from one-point-two million to four-point, almost four-point-five million. The cost of living offsets out a little bit in the out-years, but if this initiative fails, basically we lose three-point-three million dollars each year, and in fourteen-fifteen, that would leave us with a two-point-seven million dollar negative fund balance, if all the other factors remain the same. So, compared to where we were at the adopted budget for twenty-thirteenth, twelve-thirteen, our, our unaudited actuals, at, at that adoption point, we estimated that we would have a five-point-seven million dollar unrestricted, unappropriated fund balance. So once we close the books and see how everything shakes out, we actually ended the year with an eight-point-three million dollar unappropriated, unrestricted fund balance. That's an increase of two-point-six million dollars. So that's a lot of money, but we have a breakdown of how we got there. So, if we do an, an analysis of only the unrestricted side, the restricted side, all the dollars have to be spent a specific way, and that's not where we have any means of making budgetary decisions in reality. So, I, our focus is on the unrestricted revenues. So, our revenue limit, we're pretty close in our projections, just off by thirteen-thousand dollars, and when you compare that to our total budget line item, that's less than point-oh-three-two percent deviation. Our federal revenues, we received thirteen-thousand dollars for, and this is unrestricted, which is really uncommon, but this is the medical, the MA reimbursement, medical, Medicaid, it's tied to Medicaid reimbursement that we received. The state revenues are up, and by six-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand dollars, and out of eight-point-three, over eight-point-three million, that represents about seven, seven and a half percent up. Local revenues were actually down by a hundred-and-sixty-nine thousand dollars, and we take in over two-point-five million, and that's a decrease of six-point-seven percent. But, almost that entire amount is related to interest income. So, I know, the, the interest rate is so low, and our cash flow is so low, that even budgeting, you know, two-hundred thousand dollars, we were off a hundred-and-forty-seven thousand dollars in interest income in the general fund. So, and that's, that's extremely low.
Is the local revenue, the local interest income fees?
No.
What does that mean?
That is accounted for in our capital facilities funds, in Fund 25, and so that's a separate fund in, in your packet. These are local grants and donations that come in, other local monies typically. Some of the funds come in from the South, Sonoma County Office of Education identified in this bucket as property tax transfer for special education, but, but the bulk of it is really local monies coming in for, for specific, for the schools and the like. So, out of almost fifty-two million dollars, we were, we were under-budgeted by four-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars overall, which is less than one percent. So on the analysis of our unrestricted expenses, we were extremely close in our salaries and benefits. We were slightly over in each category. Our supplies and our services, this is typically where we don't spend all of our money. A lot of this money is tied to those grants and donations that carry over, and our site-based monies. And also, the departments have been really very frugal in spending. For example, a hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand dollars of this is, is due to energy savings. So, turning out those lights makes a big difference. Let's see, equipment, actually, this equipment budget wound up in the services. It was miscoded, so it, the budget existed, it was just in the wrong category. So, it looks like we, and that was the purchase of a bus, and we've received grant money from Bay Area Quality Management District to purchase a new bus. The largest issue is our outgo and transfers, and these, these have flip-flopped over the years, and how the CDE wants us to, to account for transfers of adult education and deferred maintenance dollars. Well, when adult education dollars became flexible, they end up in our general fund, and they have made us tr, account for them as an expenditure transfer to adult education. So, now they've changed their mind, and now we can just simply move the revenue. We don't have to count it as an expenditure. So, so, this one-point-one million dollars is solely due to the deferred maintenance transfer and the adult education transfer, that we don't have to treat that way anymore. So, so, when you look at it in the overall, we didn't spend two-point-one million dollars, so to speak. Over half of that is in that bucket, and we didn't spend five percent of our overall dollars, which is not bad. But together, that makes up, these revenue and expenditure differences make up that two-point-six million dollars. But together, that makes up, these revenue and expenditure differences make up that two point six million dollars. Um, the other thing I just wanted to share with you, um, is our encroachment. A lot of times, this is, you know, a, a topic of interest for you. Um, overall, we didn't spend, um, we decreased, not decreased, but just didn't spend about six hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars of, of funds, um, for programs that are underfunded, I'm sorry. Um, special education being one of them. And our encroachment was down by our original estimate by over a quarter of a million dollars. And the reason is, in this box over here, services are very, uh, difficult to gauge under our special ed program, because it's based on the attendance of the students out at the non-public agencies and the non-public schools. So, we issued purchase orders for the, for the full amount, but that's not what we pay. We get, this is actually very, very close, considering the purchase orders that we actually issued. We know that we don't pay them, so we, we gauge that. So, we were off by fifty-eight thousand dollars to the good. The rest of these items are revenues that we weren't able to predict, um, coming in. Um, prior year property tax dollars coming in from Sonoma County Office of Education for special ed. Positive behavior, um, that is, we didn't book a receivable for last year, and then, and then the other half, approximate half, is for the current year. So, it's a prior year and, uh, current year allocation. Deaf and hard of hearing funds for, uh, support for those students. Um, and then also translation services. So, those are revenues that we see as, as it happens, and we're not always able to predict them. So, our routine maintenance, um, is over four hundred and ten thousand dollars that we didn't spend. Um, and the large bulk of that is the deferred maintenance transfer, that we didn't have to account for as an expenditure transfer. Um, the other sixty-one thousand dollars is just due to, um, decreased need of routine maintenance. A lot of the projects are being done out of deferred maintenance funds, and so we were able to save general funds by, um, managing the budget. And then, on the flip side, however, our transportation budget, especially in the special ed area, was over budget by about twenty-eight thousand dollars. So, um, again, those costs are very, um, they're, it's very, very expensive to transport the kids to the various places throughout the county. Um, and, uh, so that's that. Um, any questions? Do you have questions for? Alright. I wanted to know if I made it under my time limit.
So, if you wanna fire that thing back up, go ahead.
I mean, other than, thank you for working hard to try to get that. I know, I know that you guys are understaffed, because we've made so many cuts. Yeah, and, um, the, the way the state funds education is ridiculous, frankly. Um, and so, to be able to get that all into a document that makes sense, thank you.
Well, um, yes, I have a very, uh, key person who contributes to this, Ray Poole. And, um, you know, she does a fabulous job, but we have been short-staffed in the business office for almost the entire year. And so, it's put out, um, a lot of pressure, uh, to make this happen. So, thank you for your patience.
Thank you for winding your way through the most unbelievably dysfunctional funding system I've ever seen in my life. I, I, I keep this at the office, because, you know, we do this on a daily basis, but with the public side, the private side.
Yeah.
And I always show this to people, and they'll scratch their head, and then they look, and get the grease poured out, and... It's amazing to me that the, the, the staff that you have, you can put this together, because the reporting requirements and how I predict this.
Yeah, they are absurd. Um, the fact that these dollars, so many of these dollars have become flexible and should be unrestricted, still the amount of accounting, we still have to account for all those dollars separately, and do special reports to the board about how we're spending the dollars, even though they're quote-unquote unrestricted and flexible. It's made it so much more complicated, um, than it ever has been, ever. I would rather have those separate buckets of money to account for, because actually, it would be easier.
It's easier.
Yeah, so, and, um...
And, and the public wonders how, how there's so much money in education. And we know how well, locally, the individual schools, and how we, we divvy up the money that we can control. But when you think about, about the amount of time that you all spend reporting, and then you multiply that by district, you know, a thousand districts in the state, it's, it's phenomenal. And, um, and we're very fortunate to have, you know, a really, a, a great district staff to be able to keep all of that going, um, and allow the teachers and, and everybody else to do what they do best.
It's almost like the, the performing schools, budgetary-wise, should, should get exemptions, because most of this is predicated upon them wanting to oversee and jump on you at the first sign of trouble, right?
Right.
And, um, if you're a high performer and you're making all your bills, it should be almost like a reduced report mechanism. Like Detroit are used to, like, gap standards, just, okay, yeah, a, a twelve, a twelve-grade business student could read this and make sense of it. Here, you know, you work for pretty sophisticated people, and I, I'm with Troy, I love this thing, I think, what the heck are they really trying to get there? They're, they're, these usually, I mean, people are either trying to lose numbers, so you don't figure it out, or, that so many people weigh in with their little petty and pet, uh, uh, what you would call, uh, areas of influence, that, that it all comes together, and just this mishmash, Byzantine, it really doesn't make sense to anybody, in a big-picture view.
Another level of complication are, well, for private industry, it's GASBIE, but for us, it's the GASBIE statement. They have tweaked and changed how we report this. This still isn't technically done, when the auditors come in, and then we can do a whole nother conversion of this data to make the new GASBIE standards. This is, this is about two-thirds the job. It's still, it's still a tremendous amount of work that goes beyond this. And, and I'm, quite frankly, I'm really not sure about the value of all those conversions. I do think that, you know, for big city governments and the like, you know, pointing out their un- unidentified debt, for example, like their pensions and, you know, retirement benefits. You know, I think that that's been beneficial, but in the larger scope of things, it really does not help you make budgetary decisions about where we go or don't go. And I also don't think that it's a real viable statement for financial institutions to make decisions about if they lend to us or not. So, it's, um, a lot of work, and I don't think there's a lot of benefit.
I used to work for a federal contractor, and our requirements were very clear-cut. The, the financial statements and, and reporting I had to do, it's nothing like this. And it was a private sector company that also did some public contracts.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
So, i- this is just...
I mean, the state, the state that is for years and years giving billions and billions of dollars, but in front of pension money, wants transparency down here, though, right?
Right.
And they're talking billions, and where are we at the, you know, under higher middle, right?
So, the other thing that I'd like to share with you is, due to the fact of, uh, you know, one of the areas that we're going to try to simplify, and to manage this workload, is we will, um, be looking at joining the, uh, Sonoma County Office of Ed, their financial system, and get away from the, the bookkeeping related to, to financial systems. It adds an element, there's a tremendous a lot, uh, tremendous amount of features in our financial system that are incredible, but because of all this burden, we're not even able to get there and utilize them, um, to the degree that we would love to.
So, the system that you use, you didn't have to go back and almost rekey data into the county system as well?
We, we import it, so it's not, uh, it's not a complete duplication. So, there's import mechanisms, but you still have to make sure that the books are...
You gotta make sure they're foot, once you get them on there, make sure every transfer goes in. Gosh, I can't believe that there's one part in here that may not, this is crazy. So, I just have kind of one...
We're financial professionals, and this is just...
I mean, this is the definition of gobbledygook, to be honest with you. One question I guess I'll have is, we've had a lot of discussion about state funding of schools and new state funding in general, how many comes in, and you very admirably try to explain this to us and for the folks at home, and we sit here and think, and Brian Naughton's on, and read it again. With the amount of, and to be kind, the word would be trickery, that goes on with the state budget, as we see it manipulated back and forth and to and from, so we, we don't count things that we shouldn't count, short school days, do all kinds of weird stuff. When we're talking about some of those transfers back and forth, and you had said that we no longer expense those, they're now just transfers,
Yes.
is that part of that, because all of a sudden, that makes us look a little bit better, right? Is that part of that accounting trickery, if you will?
Well, I...
And I don't mean from you, but I mean from how you're direct, you've just gotten insane, you were directed to now do it this way.
Right, I, I, the flip-flopping that is done at the state level on how we do accounting is, is, is... I, I, quite frankly, I think that the committee should be disbanded, because the amount of work... And then, from year to year, when it changes, and you, and if, if you miss a beat, you know, you're, you're out of sync with what you should be doing and how you should be budgeting for it, creates this type of, you know, uh, anomaly, so to speak, when, when I have to sit here and explain to you why we're, we're a million dollars less in expenditures.
And the frustrating part of that is, the whole basis of accounting from back in the beginning, when people started actually doing it, is that it put numbers on a level playing field, such that people could sit and judge them on the same basis. That you didn't account for one thing one way, and you didn't account for it a different way, and then you can actually understand, standardize, it's, it's understandable to everybody. But what I continue to, to, when this is, I don't know, six, seven, eight, twentieth year, whatever, it's different all the time.
I know.
So, just when I think I've got it, I don't got it anymore.
It's, it's very frustrating.
Yeah.
It's very frustrating.
So, thank you for doing what you do, but let's cut this between that committee.
I, I, I'm all for it.
We'll go tomorrow, I'm driving.
I'm all for it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Next, Jane, uh, item for you, Jane Escobedo, Assistant Superintendent of Education Services, we're reviewing the municipal city's two thousand eleven, twelve board goals and preview the two thousand twelve, thirteen board goals.
Hi. The team from Educational Services is here this evening. And, um, first of all, we want to stop before we jump into twelve, thirteen. We want to stop and talk about eleven, twelve, because you received a written report around eleven, twelve. We, we previewed some of the, the numbers and things at our last board meeting, and then you guys received the written report, um, two weeks ago, I believe. And, so I'm just gonna stop and ask any questions. Over eleven, twelve.
Who reserved the right?
You reserved the right. It is reserved.
Redirect. Redirect, redirect.
Redirect, right, okay. Um, with that, then, we are gonna jump right into twelve, thirteen, and Trisha's gonna kick this off to us.
Good evening. Alright, so, looking at last year's goals and where we, um, made progress and, and where we didn't, we got together and started looking at the twelve, thirteen school year goals. So, here's where we're going to, so this is our draft of them for today. So, our overarching, um, kind of our umbrella for everything, is to increase achievement for all students and close the achievement gap in order to prepare students for college and career options. So, under that overarching umbrella, we have three goals. Our academic support for students, our support for our instructional team, and then the overall supporting learning environment in which we want students to flourish. This probably looks familiar, because it's the same as last year. Those are the same three. So, so now this year, in reviewing it again, and coming up with what our goals are gonna be, we saw that there are some themes across all three goals. And what we want to do is to increase opportunities for everyone. And these are six themes that we saw intertwined and kind of to support the, the foundation for the three goals. So, we have twenty-first century skills, and this is the superstructure behind all the themes, and this is for all students. These are the skills we want all students to have, and to be proficient when they leave for their college and career-ready options that they may have. Our common core standards implementation, that's the foundation. That's the things that, what we teach, our content standards that we want our students to master. And the twenty-first century skills from up above are correlated, because that's the way that they're gonna demonstrate these, and be proficient in, in our standards. Does that make sense? So, then, we mean again, we have, for those students who need more support, we have tier one and tier two interventions, and we talked before about response to intervention. So, this is the area when students who need the two areas above, support in which to attain and be proficient in those areas, that, um, that weave through the goals, that then we're gonna provide it in the tier one and tier two interventions. So, then we go on to teacher collaboration. And this is to ensure that all students receive high-quality instruction. So, we're having our teachers work together for a focus on a more rigorous curriculum and for, um, student work. So, again, looking at the common core and looking at the twenty-first century skills. And then we go to the college and career-ready, um, theme, and that's, again, our outcome for all students, going back to that overarching goal that we have, an umbrella. And then, the sixth one is fostering resiliency and preventing failure. And this is the area where we're looking at the social-emotional support needed to overcome any barriers that students may have, and feeling safe and, um, in a secure environment, um, that they may need throughout the school year. So, then we have our details of the, all the three goals that are gonna follow the next.
Questions about this area and our, our themes?
Okay, so, goal one.
Okay, so, goal one, um, remains pretty close to last year's goal. Um, you guys have the, you had the long document, a directly long document in your board letter last week. Um, the one that you have in front of you today is an update of that document, because there's, I'm just, I thought there's gonna be at least one more. Okay? Because we keep finding things in it that, um, are, that need to be updated. Um, so, first goal is around increasing the academics and academic success of our students. Um, I'm just gonna highlight a couple of things in here. You have the long document, you guys have had it, feel free to ask questions, and we'll bring it back next time, just to, if you have any other questions. Um, so, I'm gonna just kind of buzz through these really quick. The first, um, goal, they're ninety-five percent proficient in literacy at the end of third grade. We all know that that is a benchmark for kids. If they are proficient in literacy and reading at the end of third grade, they are going to be more proficient in fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth, they're gonna be able to read history, they're gonna be able to read science, and they're gonna be successful across the, their years. Um, tactics to support that, um, you know about the STAR assessments that we're using to actually begin to screen and monitor kids across the district, K-12? And then, we're also looking at that whole idea of our TI, you see the tiers of invent, um, intervention and support services. Um, in mathematics, I'm gonna look at the first one again, and that is that whole idea about fractions. It's coming, research is telling us, it's just like literacy in third grade. If they are proficient with fractions at fifth grade, they're gonna be proficient in algebra. They're gonna be able to access higher math in later years. In order to do that, you'll see that third bullet down there underneath the tactics, third through sixth grade teachers are being trained in a common core unit focusing on fractions, so that everybody will be teaching fractions, using those twenty-first century skills, those creativity, critical thinking, com- communication, and, here, can I remember the fourth one?
Collaboration.
Collaboration, using those four skills, okay? Um, I also have to point out the second bullet there, and you know, we've talked a lot about algebra and the data that we have been generating... And you know, we've talked a lot about algebra and the data that we have been generating around algebra. And you'll see that it is the elimination of Algebra one B, one A, and one B, which is the two-year course for Algebra one. And we are looking to eliminate that course, making it a one-year course and then maybe doing shadow course behind it so that the kids get more support in the one year they are taking algebra. Um, writing, EAP, let me just talk about EAP a little bit. That is the Early Assessment Program, and it's part of the STAR test. Um, and it gives the kids a predictor of whether they're going to be successful in college, okay? Um, so we'll be looking at that to kind of gauge where our, our students are. And then underneath it, you see the EAP curriculum piloted. There is a curriculum that's been developed by CSUs and UCs called the Early Reading and Writing Curriculum. Um, and we are actually going to be piloting that at, um, Pedlema High School this year to support the kids who are not on track, um, and in their junior and senior years. College and career readiness, um, as you saw in your background, we're kind of beginning to move away from just looking at STAR test scores to gauge our progress. And these, this is a real good example of that. Predictor, leading predictors, looking at how the kids are doing before they get there and looking at, you know, how are the kids doing in grades six and eight? Um, how many of them are completing their core courses with a C or better? Because that will give us a good idea of how they're going to do in their junior, senior years and in high school. Um, and then you can see that with all of the tactics around this particular goal, we're really looking at evaluating what we're doing right now and then creating a plan to, um, increase access, increase opportunities for all kids. Yay!
So in order to achieve those first two goals, we know when we talk about students' assets, developmental phases, um, the Maslow's hierarchy of needs, they have to be ready to receive this instruction. They need to be physically and mentally healthy. The environment needs to be free of distractions. There needs to be an avoidance of any type of, of fear or not wanting to be at school. Our students need to be substance-free and not truant in order to take advantage of all of these things. And that is the, the background behind goal three. Um, in order for them to take advantage of all of the hard work that our teachers are doing, our administrators are guiding, we need them in class in front of those teachers. So we want to continue to reduce the number of suspensions that take place across the board. And we want to continue to reduce the truancy rate. So the first part of that goal is to decrease the number of days of lost instruction. The second part of that is the environment itself. The California Help the Kids Survey gives us a good anonymous look at what our environments are like on our school campuses. The students can tell us their feelings without their identity being shared about what their experiences are on campus, how they feel about their significant relationships with adults, how they feel about coming to school. Are they scared? Are they worried? Are they being bullied? There are a set of six different indicators that go into one measure of that California Help the Kids Survey. Um, the connectedness scale that is part of the report is something we are going to continue to monitor and look at. We want that connectedness scale to increase by five percent when we do this survey again next fall. Right now, our seventh graders and our fifth graders are double the connectedness scale that we see on average in the state. And our eleventh graders have a twenty, twenty-point increase above the state level. We don't have any baseline data to look at for our district because this is the first time that scale came out. But we want to continue the efforts and the things that we've done so that we get an increase in five percent. And when we hear from our administrators, they don't want students missing any class time. And if it's anybody out there that is missing more than six periods at the secondary level or two days at the elementary level, we're doing some type of intervention. We're doing phone calls, we're doing letters, or meeting to try to make sure that that does not continue. We want to make sure that we keep those suspension and expulsion rates down. If a student is suspended or expelled, obviously they're not in front of those teachers. So right now, when we look at our data from last year, fewer than nine percent of our students experienced the suspension event during the course of the year, which is half of what it was ten years ago. So the work at the sites and, and what the teachers are doing and what our administrators are doing is making a big difference. Um, based upon the work of Major and Steve and the Budget Committee and looking at various resources that we have in the district, we've been able to maintain a guidance specialist that provides mental health support to campuses. That guidance specialist has a group of MFT interns that is also supporting students and staff. We have Project Success that is a grant, and we also have General Fund Two Elementary Guidance Specialists. That's allowing us to have at least three days of guidance on top of the teacher interaction, the administrative support, and the academic counselors that students get at their school sets. We also know that, uh, research says that when a parent is engaged with their school and their child's school environment, that is, that leads to an increase in that student's performance. We were, or we will be collecting baseline data this year in terms of the types of events and the number of events parents are attending. From back-to-school nights to booster meetings, all the way down to meetings that are specific about their child and what's going on. And those, those data will be broken up into those categories. And we, as we move into the future, we want to try to find a way to track the parents that are there and how their students are doing and try to, to see if there's a correlation that, that matches the, the research that's there. As you see in the data statistics that we've, we've talked about, substance use, particularly marijuana use continues to be an issue on our campuses. A hundred and seven suspensions last year directly related to marijuana use or possession um, that yields over five hundred days of suspension. And that's days lost when those students can't be in front of those teachers. But not only that, they are not mentally clear when they're under the influence of substances. And so we want to continue to use our prevention strategies and increase those. So our focus tactics have that be in that data. And we want to make sure that when a site comes upon something that's working really well, that we're sharing it with all the sites. The resources as well as the, the programs that are in place.
So, um, these are drafts, this is a draft at this point in time. Um, you guys have had a couple of chances to look at, um, the big, the long document that has all of the goals kind of laid out with the tactics laid out. Um, we put it on the long paper because when it was on a, eight and a half by eleven, it was really little. So, um, we put it on the long paper so that it was a little bit easier to read. Um, I'm going to give you a, a chance to answer questions tonight, but then also we'll bring this back again one more time before we confirm. Um, it will also go to the K-12 Curriculum Council. Um, their first meeting is October fifth, so, yeah, so.
So will we have this October ninth or the twenty-third?
Uh, probably the ninth, yeah.
October the ninth for adoption.
Yeah.
Another thing that you have in your packet is a reference sheet for any little acronyms of things that you have in the longer document. So you can.
Yes, it's the glossary.
Yes, so we did that this year, too.
Yeah. Because we do speak in gobbledygooks sometimes.
Do you have any questions tonight? Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, item H, approval of the grant, so September eleventh, two thousand twelve.
Move.
Any other second?
All second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Hope so. Um. Okay, um, do I have any comment cards from the public on items not on the agenda? Seeing none. Um, report on activities and correspondence of school board members, um. Speaking of the amount of, um, parents' involvement, I went to the McKinley Back-to-School Night, and it was a full, uh, multi, lots and lots of parents. And it was exciting to see that the new principal, um, engaged. And, and it was wonderful. And there was also a McKinley site visit, um, back to school. I think we had that last time, kindergarten high. Um, attendance at the bash, did we have that? We did. Various sporting events because we have a lot of, uh, exciting teams in, in our, in our district. Okay. I have a whole agenda. Approval of the consent agenda by consolidated motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Um, under administration and human resources, uh, first hold item is our employment report. Recommended motion that the employment report be approved. Do I hear a motion?
Move. Second.
Run.
It is, um, really great pleasure to introduce two new members of our leadership team to you tonight. Um, and first of all, I've got Sheila Garvey. Sheila is, um, was selected as the administrative intern for Pedlema City Schools. And she is working. She's working, um, at Mary Collins with hardly retired, um, Principal Kathy Larson. As, and Kathy is the interim principal at Mary Collins this year. Sheila's just been with Pedlema City Schools, this is her second year being with Pedlema City Schools. She spent last year teaching at Grant, and she came to us from, um. Old Adobe District, Mead Rock School, Old Adobe District, where she taught for eight years. Um, in both of those roles, she had a number of opportunities in various ways to, to, um, assume responsibility for teacher leader positions, which clearly has prepared her for, for her current role. And, um, in just probably two short months, um, we have seen the wisdom of our choice. And just all of the things that she brings to Cherry Valley and to the district. And we are really pleased to welcome Sheila to the, uh, leadership team.
Thank you.
I, I told him you'd speak for no more than five minutes.
I would just like to thank the district for the wonderful opportunity. This is a very comfortable way for me to assume a new role, having Kathy Larson there to mentor me. And I, um, feel like I'm a student myself, just learning something new pretty much every hour. Really enjoying it, so thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the other new leader in our district is Lori Dean.
Yay, Lori!
Lori has been selected as the Program Manager for Instructional Technology for Pedlema City Schools in a sixty percent position. Um, Lori has been working at Grant for, um, eight years. Continues to work at Grant as a kindergarten teacher for the other forty percent of her position. Prior to her work at Grant, she was at Penrose for eight years. And last year, you all get to know her as the Pedlema Federation President. Lori was also a teacher leader at Grant where she instituted the No Teacher Left Behind, one-to-one, um, professional development, still probably doing that. Um, really demonstrating her expertise both in technology and in presenting professional development. And we are also really pleased to welcome Lori to the, uh, leadership team. I, I must say that I know she has an office in here, but clearly this was a role that this district needed because I never see her in the building. I think she spends all of her time out in the, out in the schools where she belongs in.
I'll be talking about a gas car here shortly.
Anyhow, well.
Thank you. Yes, well, thank you. Um, I, I really enjoyed myself. And he is right, I'm at the sites. I do have a little area in here, but I never tend to make it to. But I'm really enjoying myself. I've done a lot of staff trainings already. Got another one tomorrow at McDowell. And, um, I'll be offering district-wide professional development technology as well starting in October, so looking forward to that.
That's great.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay.
There we go.
So, thank you both for sitting through all of that. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Um, our next hold item, uh, item four, under Business Services. Recommended motion that Resolution twelve thirteen oh four of the Board of Education of the Pedlema City Elementary and Pedlema Joint Union High School Districts for adopting the GAN limit be adopted.
Move.
Second.
Well, um, this is probably, as you were talking earlier about the most, um, convoluted document.
Trickery.
Trying to under.
Chanel again, you should. Those are the two words I want you to use. Put it in my ear someone.
Yes, and, and Steve can actually, uh, speak to this, the history of this better than I can. But it's really supposed to establish a spending limit. And clearly, um, that it, I mean, we, we abide by that, but, and, and, um, but our state. I think the state should have a GAN limit. If they don't, do they?
Yeah, they have a GAN, but they're way below it. And so if we, if ours, it goes to the state and it's within their GAN limit, so there's no return offense.
Yes.
Because we're way below the GAN limit.
So, anyway, um.
Any questions about that? At least we control ourselves and we document everything, however.
We, we try.
And don't hide stuff.
No.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Item five, the un-audited actuals for the two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve year. Recommended motion that the board approve the two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve un-audited actuals and the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen revised budget for all funds.
Move. Second.
Any further discussion on those items?
Absolutely done.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Um, discussion, item seven, tenth day involvement report. It's like it might be a little over than we've adjusted. Anyway. Oh, sorry. It's okay. All right, Steve, did you want to?
Well, yes, if you look at the numbers, um, you have to remember in elementary that we, we siphoned up more of our sixth graders to our old sixth grade academy than we had anticipated. So we're down in, in elementary. Our kindergarten numbers are slightly less than we had anticipated as well. Our, in our secondary schools, you can see that Kenworth and Pedlema Junior High are both up. Pedlema High School's up a little bit, but Casa, the largest of the schools, is down from previous years.
Okay. Is this the, the low year that we have for funding?
No, uh.
This year, this past year.
This year, we are anticipated being slightly up from last year in total ADA.
Oh.
And then, um, but less than the prior year, which was our funded year last year.
Right.
So our funding goes down a little bit in the current year because we're going to be based on actual. And then next year, it should be up above this year, and we'll be funded on next year.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Our next hold item. I think we can combine five and six there. One applies to the elementary district and one to the high school district. Um, Resolution twelve thirteen oh five and twelve thirteen oh six. Recommended motion that Resolution twelve thirteen oh five and oh six of the Pedlema City Elementary School District to fully comply with requirements of Education Section Code six zero one one nine through six zero two five two regarding sufficiency of textbooks or instructional materials for the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen school year be adopted and the corresponding, uh, resolution for the high school district is item six.
Second.
This is, this is a yearly thing that we do, making sure, certifying that we have sufficient textbooks for all students in the district.
And do we?
And we do.
Excellent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I have a report of action taken in closed session in accordance with Government Code five four nine five seven point one. Case number one, a case has been presented to the board that the student did commit an expellable act defined by the California Education Code. The recommended motion is for the board to expel and to suspend the site discipline team recommendation for expulsion in accordance to board policy and to allow continued enrollment in a district-operated school under mandated conditions. The student's suspended expulsion status will be in effect for the fall and spring semesters of the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen school year. Conditions above subject to review with evidence of positive attendance, satisfactory behavior, anger management, or life skills council program, community service, and appropriate academic performance. Do I hear a motion?
Move. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Case number two. Case number two, a case has been presented to the board that the student did commit an expellable act as defined by the California Education Code. The recommended motion is for the board to expel and to suspend the site discipline team's recommendation for expulsion in accordance to board policy and to allow continued enrollment in a district-operated community day school under mandated conditions. The student suspended expulsion status will be in effect for the fall and spring semesters of the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen school year. Conditions above subject to review with evidence of positive attendance, satisfactory behavior, anger management, or life skills counseling program, community service, and appropriate academic performance. So I have a motion.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Future business calendar activities for board members consideration and agenda items for our next meeting. There will be a special board meeting next Tuesday, October second. We'll be having a conversation about wellness in the Medrow Room. The next regular board meeting will be held at six P.M. on October ninth here in the boardroom at two hundred Oakley Street. So any particular items requested for the next meeting, October ninth?
October second, do we know what time that meeting is going to be?
It's six to nine, and we'll have food.
Okay.
Okay, we'll have just routine items for, we know we're going to have our board goals for the next meeting. Okay, and upcoming events. Looks like there comes a break for Mary Collins and Cherry Valley and Cherry Grove right now. And there's various football meetings and other sporting events coming up. We won't be able to go home, so a back-to-school night because we have a special meeting. That's it. We will adjourn at this meeting for signing papers, updating agents. Thank you all for coming.